All right, I'm gonna call the City Council meeting in Vernon February 21st, 2023 at about 30 to order. Candace, if you'd like to make your case.
Family Hall, we thank you for allowing us time to be here tonight. We ask that you guide the council and help them make the best decisions for the city that will benefit the community and keep everyone safe, help our mayor and improve his health and just be with this community in Jesus' name, I pray. Thank you, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the January 17th, 2023, one part of that, the city stamp, is on one of the pages. And so I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the minutes with that correction.
Which one?
It's January 17th, the regular meeting.
When I copied it, it's got that on there, yes ma'am.
Yeah, so some words are blurred, but Candace knows it. And so I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda with corrections.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second it.
Discussion, all in favor?
Uh.
Uh, motion carried. Mayor's report, obviously he's not here with us. Candace, have you, without being in too detail, have you been in contact with any of the families?
Just that he was resting this morning. Ms. Mary is in contact and knows more, but I don't, you know.
Yeah.
I've seen her.
She's in Gainesville.
Okay. Attorney's report?
I don't have anything. Oh, wait, I'll just give you, I think we do have, um, Michelle Cross's unemployment appeal hearing tomorrow at 7:30.
Jeffrey Hewing tomorrow morning?
Jeremy's gotta be handling that.
Where, in Jeffrey?
No, it's by phone.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
Okay, also, Michelle, if you will, Candace has provided an email that you may wanna look at.
And we just showed you earlier.
So, when it comes to, um, the dispensaries, there are only two things that you can do. You can either have an outright ban on dispensaries within the city or you can regulate them to the same extent that you regulate them within self-parties.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure you were that. We need a. Agenda for number five.
Becky, I would ask you something, don't. Like, if we did ban, would we need a warrant for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Clerk's report?
Um, I don't have anything, um, well, one thing's on here, but, um, uh, just those things that I gave y'all. And I think everything else, we're gonna add the strapping. Becky's already got that.
Yeah, it's already there.
So, my brain's not working super great, so just pick it if you need it and maybe I'll remember.
We understand.
Okay.
Wreckers your report?
Uh, he stopped by, they are having their championship game tonight, so he couldn't come. He said that this is the last, this is the championship game for basketball. Baseball, T-ball, we-ball, uh, registration is underway. They've started working on the fields, he said, but he does need to know what's going on with the bathrooms 'cause March 6th, they'll start practices.
That's tonight, I'm reading it up.
Okay.
So, Jason's talking about that next, so that's the wreck report.
Okay, puppet works report.
Okay. Basically, that's really not my thing. Um, so we talked about doing a new bore across the road and then, so we went out there, looked at it, I got the trade. So, to do the bore across the road, to put a new pipe in, and we'll have to do the little driveway in betweens of the high school, middle school. It's $2,500 to do both of them. That's both bores. That's a hundred foot.
So you gotta do two bores instead of one?
Two on this one, yeah. Because, because I can't go into the high school nowhere. The closest place I can tap into is right there in between them. Because when they done the high school, everything's kind of behind it.
Yeah.
So, and then that way, it'll, it'll be all new all the way.
And that should fix.
And we'll tie in to the line that comes out there to the parking lot, that'll do away with all that that's on the road, it'll be all branded.
So no more problems.
So we shouldn't have no problems. So as soon as we get approval on that, he, he bores, I talked to him today, me and him met out there today, and so he said.
Can he indicate how long after from approval?
He told me to call soon as that would dawn to me.
Well, that's on, um, we've got you on here as number six.
Okay.
So, um.
And the other thing is, we ordered more patch, Miss Quinn, and I guess Mr. Pippin's happy right now, but we ordered more too.
You ordered more?
Yeah.
So when is that supposed to begin?
Tomorrow, right?
It, it may be tomorrow, it may be the next day.
Yeah.
We ordered the, the, it's more like a permanent patch?
Yeah.
The one day we're talking about?
Yeah. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Fire chief's report?
I think he's bound in fire today.
He messaged a few minutes ago asking about the meeting, but, um, I will, I can just quickly say that, um, Bob came by today from the rural water development. And so what they could do, what he's saying is they can buy a truck and pay 55% of it. I know that y'all obligated $30,000 for a truck. They can pay 55% of a truck. So if we can find a truck for $60-ish thousand, they'll pay 55%. And what is already budgeted, or 30, we can spend. Yeah. So he told me just to let him know tomorrow, 'cause rural development can start it right away.
So we need to vote on that as well?
If we can, I mean, we'd have to find a truck, but if you wanna proceed looking with that.
So we don't have to vote to, to look, do we?
No.
Okay. I don't have a problem with this, regardless of council.
Okay.
How about participation?
You guys?
New business signs for entering Vernon. Where are we on the ones from the county?
Well, it's kind of at a standstill. They sent some, you just talking about the, like, the Vernon City Hall.
Yeah, the ones that were gonna come in.
Yeah, but here, Rose was communicating back and forth with them back when I first started, and that kind of stopped. So I think it's, uh, they sent some to look at. I could, I kind of thought y'all had already looked at them, so I can get that and bring them in for y'all to look at them. It's just a basic.
Didn't we see those before?
Yeah, we've already seen them, though, I thought we all agreed on them.
See, I'm sorry, I came in midway and I don't know what.
We're hopping up again, then, we thought, we looked at them once.
Did y'all?
We approved them.
Well, okay, so then they just need to be ordered?
As far as I'm aware.
Then I can do that. But you were talking about the signs for entering Vernon, right?
Yeah, I've, I've been contacted, uh, probably some of the rest of the council has been contacted in the last few months, um, about.
There's no sign.
The welcome signs, coming in and out of town, like everybody else has. Um, uh, it was even suggested that some, maybe some of the churches may help with the cost of it. We come up with something, um, pretty much everybody else around has a welcome sign with some flowers planted or something going in and out everywhere and that.
But the sign we were talking about before is just the signs that say, it's pointing to the city hall. 'Cause there's no sign out there that says where City Hall is.
Yeah.
There's nothing out there that says City Hall's.
The county's gonna provide those, but what I was talking about.
Oh, the other one.
Ben, I was contacted about, hey, you know, everybody, all the other towns around us have welcome to the city of signs. And so I just wanna bring it forward, council, and see if we may need to look into, what, something like that with calls, some designs.
Yeah, it usually, um, has beautification grants for that kind of stuff. I would look into that.
And the church development, you know, they do things too.
Yeah, church development.
Because, especially if it's just a one-time thing, they use it, kind of make money or something to it. Forgot how they did it when I was on there.
Yeah, well, and even if we could get just on either end, you know.
We're just on 79, you mean, right now?
Yeah, just to start with, that, you know, that would be something.
Yeah, 'cause even lots of all those little towns.
Everybody has something. I mean, yeah, we've got the, you know, the little green sign that says City of Vernon, but I'm talking about something, you know, welcoming.
I looked at just a few online, just trying to get an idea, and, um, they were from, you know, $400 to $5,000. But, but you could get something reasonable that was decent looking, you know, the arch and then just four-by-four posts it looked like, and, but they were all, it was all painted very nicely done, and they had flowers around the bottom.
I bet the garden club would.
I'm sure.
Say, I'm sure the garden club would love to get involved and plant some flowers. Okay, well, that's what I had on that. Number two, approve the survey for FRDP grant for the sports class, the Firdap grant.
Um, we talked about it in the workshop. We had gotten several bids, and we got the one fellow that would do it, the beginning and the end total for $3,500. Uh, he, he came by and just had done the verbal bid, so I didn't have a written bid to put in there for y'all. But out of all of them, he, you know, it was like 12:05 was the next closest one. So if that's acceptable, then I'll get the written bid so y'all can.
Approve it.
Approve it, 'cause we, the Firdap grant is on complete standstill, we're gonna run out of, kind of run out of time on it.
But do we have time to vote on it at the next meeting?
Yeah, if, if, if I've got to go ahead with him, yeah.
Okay. All right, number three, deputy clerk position.
Um, Ms. Dicky gave her notice, and so her last day is next Thursday. And, um, I just wanted to ask the council before they, just don't be in a rush to fill it. Just, I, I don't mind covering, just would like to get somebody that really, like, you know, cares about the city in here that would stay. And also, y'all might consider that it's, I feel like it's a part-time position. Ms. Dicky even said that when we talked, that it could be done part-time. And you might, could save the city quite a bit of money. You wouldn't have insurance and benefits if you wanted to try it.
Did you talk to her about it?
I did.
Yeah, I offered her money, she did. She tried.
Yay.
Been doing it all day today.
I'm very sad to lose her, but I think she's tired of hearing me ask. So.
Okay, so we just want to wait and discuss it at the workshop? Are you comfortable with that, Candace, or you gonna be able to?
Yeah, it's fine, I'll have to close for lunch, then we'll go to the bank.
That's been done before. I just don't want you to get.
We can go for you.
Do we, do we wanna go ahead and advertise, or do we wanna wait and discuss it at the workshop?
I'd just discuss it at the workshop. My concern is, if we don't hire someone, first of all, it's gonna be hard to find somebody, y'all know that. That's why we in the position we are, we don't pay enough. And if you try to find somebody part-time, I understand what Candace is coming with, but what if she takes a vacation? What if something happens? You know, it gets hard for a part-time person to handle, you know, clerk, executive clerk. That's, and that's my concern, but, uh, I'd discuss it at the workshop.
Okay, in the meantime, Candace, if it gets too much?
Yeah, don't.
Let us know, and we'll call a special meeting and.
No, I mean, I'm, it's fine.
And I understand too, the other side of that, if a part-time person, we could raise the pay, the hourly pay, if we went that route. We'd be saving the city money, but we also would be offering more than, I mean, we're offering, believe it or not, the county's got a position at now that's less than what we're paid at that point.
Why?
But if, I think we just need to discuss it at the workshop, as long as you don't get burnt out or overwhelmed.
I'm fine, and I was taking, I was.
Wait, you wanted a tip?
I, I mean, I want whatever y'all want, but I'm just saying, I just don't want y'all to hire just somebody, so there's somebody in there, and then in three or four months, we're right back at it, um.
Well.
Could you use a tip? Or you don't want a tip?
Well, I don't know, trying to teach them how to do the, the program.
You just burn it out, you spinning wheels, and you can get somebody to do it permanently, like.
Yeah, that's all we do.
The last hire, you know, we, we thought it was gonna be somebody that's gonna be here for a long time, you can't ever tell, but. Think we can, if, if we can take a little time.
Yeah, and she said if I had an emergency or if I just needed something that she could, she would come in. She did, I mean, she, she's very sad also about going, so.
But maybe she could be attempting for it.
I mean, uh, she, she said she would come in when I, you know, really needed her, so.
Okay, well, that's an option until we discuss it, so that's the best option. Yeah, if you, if you need her, can you use her?
Yeah, she said she would come, she would come, and, 'cause I had, I had wanted to take, our 30th anniversary is the end of March, and I had wanted to just take one day, so, to do something. And, um, so she had already said she would work that day.
Well, we can hire her as a tip person.
My question is, Michelle, 'cause we ran into something similar to this one time before, so I, I'm, I'm gonna be the backup and ask the question to protect the city. If we leave it standing as is with her resignation in place, can we still have her come in?
So you would wanna put her on, um, a separate contract and have her role very defined in that capacity? Usually, it's our recommendations, might get you their notice, but, but.
Uh, that's why I asked, basically, what we went through for, this is a little bit different.
Um, that puts y'all in a situation that's just not workable, that's the.
And that's what we did with Rose, isn't it? She came in and filled in and told someone. So maybe the same thing that Rose did, right?
I've had any conversations with her, so I don't know if she's willing to do.
She said if I needed her, she would come in.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so do, are, are you saying that we just need to have something in writing with her, or are we free to just let her come in?
That's up to y'all.
Until the workshop.
My recommendation's always to put it in writing, but.
No, well, then we need to get it in writing.
Yeah, ask her if she would be willing to do that, Candace.
We need to draw up something in writing, is that what you're saying? Would be the best bet, to get it in writing.
And then put it on the workshop for us to discuss.
Okay.
Moving forward. Number four, the parking lot's strapping.
Um, I put y'all on, I got that email today, um, I laid it up there for everybody to read, and he did talk to somebody about, that gave another bid. But hang on just a minute, just thought of something. I am not sure that that's not the. So, I have the one, the first bid, was the only one that would do it. The guy's name is Will, and he's local, and he gave me a price for $1,272, right? Then we've got the same, the email that Tony gave us, where he talked to someone and got a quote, and now the bid's $2,400.
Same phone number, same person?
Ah.
Uh, reach out to him, find out what's going on before we.
Yeah.
So.
So Tony talked to that person?
Tony called and asked him, this was my bid that I had gotten a month or whenever, two months ago, when we started talking about it, and we couldn't find anybody else to give.
That's when Will said that.
A bid, and so this is the bid that he gave. And then Tony talked to this guy and got a bid, and the bid is.
Twas what?
More, now, there's not sweeping on this bid, and there's sweeping, but it's only $500.
I would say, is my opinion, I don't know.
He, he.
Candace, reach out to him and find out which one of those bids is.
Okay.
Look for the number further and see if you can find one more for comparison.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Probably making someone you off the deal.
Uh, new business request. Uh, Michelle, I was under the assumption that generally this stuff goes through the county first and then comes to us?
So, um, all he's asking about are, what are your regulations on?
And we don't have it.
We don't have any.
Not to my knowledge, no. I don't even remember if y'all did the moratorium back when everybody was doing those.
So probably just need to send him the.
I did check the county, it doesn't prove that they've adopted any regulations, um, on these dispensaries or the cultivation facilities, so.
So basically, there's not many.
Not as far as I can tell, no.
So, I guess.
Let, let her know what we're talking about. Ms. Edwards, we're talking about marijuana dispensaries here in the city of Vernon, that's what we're talking about. Why, yeah, but, yeah, but that's what we're talking about.
I, I think that we're, this is just an email.
Yeah.
It's not asking for address, we don't know if he's inside the city limits or outside. This is just an email, what it's likely meant to be sent, a feeler.
So, I looked at the company, and they're obviously not currently in Florida, they do operate, um, they don't have a license in Florida yet, but they do operate in other states, um, but even if the processing of the application goes through the county, the county's still gonna expect you all to adopt the regulations as to where you want this to go. They, they process your development orders, but you all still have to, to say what you want to go where.
Okay.
So one of the questions that they're asking about is cultivation versus the dispensary? Do y'all have industrial zone?
No.
Within the city?
No. We talked about doing that at one time, but we never did that.
Um, never any industrial?
No, we was talking about, remember, they were talking about putting an exec up on Pioneer Road, an industrial zone, but we never did that.
Did they ever go through that, 'cause that was outside the city limits?
Yeah, they was talking about doing that, though, we never did that.
That was at the.
No, they said the city limits, where they was talking about. Not on Moss Hill, on Pioneer, when the work was all started. It was, it was inside the city.
But it was never done.
Was that in there?
Yeah, agricultural designation or?
We do have some agricultural, I believe.
Yep.
On Pioneer.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Smith, and on, uh, ladies' lawn.
But is this something we need to let, I mentioned it on?
So if you don't do anything, they'll just come in?
I know they would. We need to do something.
So we need to do something.
Oh, we gotta do the, the resolution.
Well, we need to come up with a resolution.
And what Michelle's saying is the county doesn't have anything in.
Not that I can tell, no. The, the county has the option to, to prohibit these countywide, but it doesn't really make that much.
Okay, so, um, how about we?
Well, then we need to get on.
Not respond until we, or, or let them know that we're gonna have to meet and discuss it. I, I don't know, Michelle, what do you suggest?
I mean, you need to have a discussion about what you want to permit in the city and where. And you need to look at, like I said, the dispensary regulations, you're gonna be really limited on what you can actually regulate. There, these facilities are kind of like, um, on the state level, it's kind of regulated like, um, somewhere that sells alcoholic beverages, so there are, you know, distance restrictions from schools. But other than that, they're, they're kind of looked at.
Like a pharmacy.
Like a pharmacy. Um, but state law does allow you to ban them completely because the possession of cannabis is still illegal under federal law.
Is this something that we need to go to the county and find out what they're gonna do first?
Um, I mean, you, you could, but you're not.
What you just said, that they, we still have to adopt that, and you see the news.
So we're gonna need to discuss it in a workshop, and also my question would be, there are some stores in our area that sell things that are used to.
Paraphenolia.
Pretty much.
If you wanna limit that, and we need to adopt the ordinance.
Well, what I'm saying is, if we're talking about stopping this kind of dispensary, are, are they, somebody gonna come back on us and say, hey, well, you're doing, you're a libelist, go.
So your dis, your dispensaries are gonna be allowed to sell paraphenolia for use with those dispensary products? But just your, you know, convenience store selling that, that's something that you can address through an ordinance.
They don't need to be addressed?
So all of it, we need, in workshop, we just, since we don't have nothing, and, uh, we just need to address it all.
Yeah.
Decide what we wanna.
What we want.
I'd actually looked at this last week for another community, um, and basically, the, the case law in Florida right now is, as a, a city, if you don't adopt anything, then they can come in and do what they wanna do. And the court should say, well, you had years to do, do this, you've had years to put these regulations in place.
But we need to start on this right away.
Yeah, 'cause if they come in and apply for a development permit this week, it's, it's coming in, 'cause you don't have anything on the books to stop it.
Okay, let's get woke up, yes. We need to know what we want in and what we don't want, and what a community wants, I mean.
So the, the biggest issue with the cultivation and processing facilities is the smell.
Yes. The smell.
The smell.
But you can smell bad anywhere.
The dispensaries, um.
Doesn't that come prepackaged more or less, a lot of the times?
In the dispenser, yeah, but, but they're talking about.
They're asking about both, yes.
In Florida, we have a, um, I forget what you call it, vertical, um, but they have to, the same company has to handle it from seed to store. So, if, if the same company that, like, if they're gonna have a dispenser, they also have to have a, a cultivation facility. And those facilities, um, noise, 'cause those, the plants will run constantly, and then the growing facility, um, there's some odor associated with those, so.
I think this is always something to do that.
But we can't.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be talking to some citizens myself to see what they think, 'cause I think, I mean, this is something that's gonna, you know, everybody watching on here. I mean, you know, I mean, I, I pretty much think I know what most people are gonna say, but I'm, I'm gonna ask too, because this is a.
And there are a bunch of them coming into Panama City, Marianna, I think, is getting chewed, um.
But she's saying we have to do something, but we do decide to come here, we need to do something.
But we gotta decide what we, what we're gonna allow.
Right, me personally banned it, that's what I think, but that's me. 'Cause I, I just think that, like she said, the odor and all that stuff, and they could put it anywhere in this town they wanna put it, and that's, would you want it next to your church and all this kind of stuff? No, your schools? No. Main personal, you know, it can stay away.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I mean, we're in, we're in a, a meeting right now, it's not only agenda, but.
So I can, um, email Candace some samples of what I'm working on for some other communities, and just have her distribute that, so y'all can be looking at that before, um, the workshop.
Okay, and the other thing, what's already here?
What, you mean in the stores?
Yeah.
And that's gonna depend on, um, if they're licensed for, um, tobacco products and these items are being sold for tobacco products versus.
That's what they can say, that's not what that's for.
Oh, in the stores, yeah.
I mean, that's what they do on the beach, what you do with it when you get out of the store.
Well, I do, I do know that there was one, and it wasn't in Vernon, but it was close by, that, um, was visited by, uh, the sheriff's department, and they had to take some of the items that they were selling down, and all of them, but some of them, that one for one, about a year and a half ago.
That's really gonna be where, um, those kinds of issues get handled, um, 'cause y'all don't have code enforcement and.
Yeah.
But definitely, you know, put it on the books if you want them to.
So you, you can send some stuff to Candace, so we can have it at the workshop every weekend. If there's any indication that they're fixing to throw a tent next week, we can call a special meeting.
Yeah, we, no, no.
Are you of the opinion that most of the citizens would not want it?
I, I.
Well, we can't say.
I can't speak for all the citizens, I, I can think of probably. I can't speak for all the citizens. I, I, I can think of probably. More likely the people that I talked to probably would not, but then there's gonna be some that are gonna be screaming. We need business in here and it's coming and they're gonna be everywhere and the city's gonna be missing out. I mean, it's both sides, you know, it is with everything, but. I mean. We've got how many each? Well, I wanna say we have like, um. Eleven or thirteen operational churches inside the city limits of Vernon.
I mean, from a revenue standpoint, a dispensary is not really gonna bring y'all much revenue. The cultivation facility is a different story. You know, when you're actually using water and sewer, you know, bringing that revenue in and your dispensary is only gonna have one toilet, maybe two. It's not gonna.
And, and a cultivation in, it's obviously limits of Vernon, I don't.
This has been happening for years.
Yes.
Just, y'all, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have did that.
It's true. I don't know. Get us information and let's talk about it at the workshop, guys.
When is our next workshop?
The first.
Sixth Monday.
The sixth? The sixth of March.
So that gives us some time to go around and ask people and then come back with a consensus.
It's a week, that's.
Like you guys in your church?
No, not at all, we. Well, and here's the thing, that we don't have any industrial.
Parks, don't have any duchess.
We have the other.
So cultivation's definitely gonna be okay in an agricultural designation, but they're asking about if you permit it in, in industrial zone areas. If you don't have industrial answers, then we don't have any.
Yeah.
Does that mean they could put it anywhere?
No, they, they could put it on bag, um, definitely. What, what they're asking about is, these people have no idea what Vernon is, is like. They, they probably not Googled Vernon at all. They've identified Vernon as being on a main.
Order of the beach.
So these are just generic, you know, I, I would not say that they're anywhere close to putting in.
No.
An application for development.
That's what my thought was from the email. It's more like a feeler.
But the state has opened up the number of licenses that will be available, so. I, I expect, um, growth to come across the handle.
Okay, well, if you'll get us the information, then we can go from there at the next workshop. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, do we, do I have a motion to approve? The bore for the sports play at twenty-five hundred dollars?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carried. Jason, get up with him and let him know and get it done. Also, the other question was, the rec director was wondering about, did you say March sixth? The bathroom situation there, if it's not gonna be done and we're gonna.
So we're new quarter party?
I told him the day, we, him and I actually talked around it the other day, the ten, he, we may need to go ahead now. Because I don't think he'll be ready by March sixth, go ahead and get quarter parties out there for that day. Because if, if we wait till the last minute, we won't be able to get. Like, you know, so maybe we could do that just to be.
Okay, so quarter party, because I don't know, start practices on the sixth, so they're normally there every day from the sixth on.
Middle school's out there right now practicing.
Okay. And were you gonna mention about that, the Hudson Street?
No.
For?
No, we're good.
Okay.
All right, number seven, Jimmy.
Every year I do a report for y'all, assume the confidence report and get it in the mail. Every customer in Vernon gets one, it's about quarter system for the previous year. I've always done it free of charge because D P always put on a class. I would go if it's a call, we take a day, but I would get it done. I know it's right. I turn it in. Well, they've quit helping anybody. They actually don't even have a person that's taking over C C Rs. Somebody that used to do them a few years ago, retired from D P, has went out and started doing them on her own. It's four hundred dollars. She will do the report, hand it to me and be ready to go to the customer who's already prepared. I think it's a fair deal. Um, I wish I could do them, but it's a little bit over my head, so I'm never doing one by myself. I've always went over there. Because I could go back and forth for two weeks, but right now I don't even know who I'd be going back and forth with because nobody else there doing it.
So somebody's giving you a price of four hundred dollars to take care of it?
And I will actually bill you, I will pay for it and bill y'all. That way you're not having to worry about a new vendor or anything, um, just an individual and I'm still responsible.
But you think that's reasoned though, right?
I probably a little bit more. It looks, it's only a few pages long, but I mean, there's words and Vernon being had a problem with a lead cup or. Twenty-one had drawn an extra snack last year. It's gonna be so confusing that.
And these are the, these are the ones that go out that are folded and stapled and they get mailed out by the city?
But there's a, obviously, she started this couple of years ago, but I talked to her the other day and, um. I think that's, she's getting a lot of business. Those, these health sessions, you know, really didn't, didn't cost anything, you know, people were going to them. When they left there, they knew they had a product that they could use.
Well, this is something that you used to do and then the city would just mail, print and mail them out.
And that's why.
You're saving out.
Yeah, that's why.
Because of the expense that you're asking us to cover the four hundred dollars for the year.
Yeah, now Candace will, will still have to stuff envelope, send it to the people. All I'm gonna do is provide you with a copy. Then certified and ready to go, just like I've always done. And that is, um, basically, I'm not making anything off that. I'm just basically, what she's charging me, I'm charging you.
What's the opinion of council?
I think it's.
We have that done though every year.
I, I would kind of need a decision pretty quick because she is gonna fill up and, um.
Do we have a name to, or, or let, let me ask you this before you say that. This is still your responsibility?
It's mine.
Okay, so.
I've just never had to pay for it, but I don't have any other option.
Because Jimmy's on here as number seven, do I have a motion to approve the four hundred dollar reimbursement to Jimmy to have these services done?
I make a motion that we reimburse him.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carried.
And I will not bill you until I actually get you a C C R.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, one thing, I have one thing. Uh, Candace asked me about the trees, the trees are in, uh, and Charles is gonna plant them the third to the fact.
Does anybody else have anything? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I see.
Discussion, all in favor?